All right, we call the meeting in order and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome. It's Thursday, October 9th. This is a work session for the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. I'm Aaron Mays. I represent District 3. On my left is Commissioner Bill Rippon, who represents District 1. On my right, Commissioner Kevin Cook, representing District 2, and our County Council Rich Eckert at the far end of the table there. Good morning to all of you, and we'll go ahead and get started. Candace?
All right. Candace Stiles, Shawnee County Extension Director. We're going to have an Extension Palooza this morning. We're going to start out with our 4-H royalty, and then we're going to have a report from our Horticulture Agent, Lane Wiens, our 4-H Agent Grace Wiens, and I'll finish up with the rest of the office and take any questions you might have.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Austin Weber, and I am the Shawnee County 4-H King, and I am here to thank you all for the financial support that you provide to Shawnee County 4-H. In Shawnee County 4-H, I am in the welding, woodworking, and swine projects, and some of the funding that you provide goes towards prizes and where we have the fair at. So for prizes this year, we gave out a whole bunch of new prizes. We gave out, for swine, we gave out a flat-top grill, a speaker, and a canopy, and your financial support also helps us to have the fair at the Expo Center. Without your funding, the fair would not be possible, and it's not just the funding, but some things in 4-H, some things that 4-H have taught me is leadership, citizenship, and public speaking. And 4-H, and public speaking has taught me, like, without 4-H, I wouldn't be comfortable speaking in front of you right now. Without 4-H, it is taught, without 4-H, I wouldn't be comfortable, and with 4-H, it's taught me to be a better public speaker, and it has taught me leadership in that in 4-H, you can teach the younger generation how to succeed and thrive in 4-H. With citizenship, I am able to serve my community so much better. We've worked at the Rescue Mission in my club. We have planted flowers in our local library and provided animals for the local church nativity scenes. Overall, Shawnee County 4-H would not be possible without the funding that this board and the county commissioners provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Latterback. I'm the 2025-2026 Shawnee County 4-H Queen. I got a Washburn role as a junior, and I'm part of the Auburn 4-H Club. I have been involved in Discovery Days, the fair, ringing bells to a Salvation Army, cleaning the land in Trail, and making meals at the Ronald McDonald House. This year, I also had a project at the State Fair, so this summer I went to Hutchinson to go see it. 4-H has allowed me to learn the skills of leadership, communication, and teamwork, and it's also given me an opportunity to give back to the community. Thank you for your support of 4-H and the contributions you have made to the program. 4-H has become a valuable experience, and it has taught me so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's do a photo, or maybe multiple photos. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Lane Wiens, Shawnee County Horticulture Extension Agent, a former Live Riars Empire Best 4-H Club member in McPherson County, so happy to be here with the 4-H program today. But I'm here to talk about a little bit of the horticulture work we've been doing around Shawnee County through the Extension Office. So first up, Master Gardener Events. We've had a fantastic year of public events with the Master Gardeners. We had our annual plant sale the first weekend of May, by far the best plant sale we've had yet. We had 762 community members through the door, and over 300 of those were lined up before the doors actually opened. It took a good 15, 20 minutes to get everybody that was lined up beforehand through the doors. It was great to have the outpouring of support from the public on that. Our annual sit-plant clinic, we helped about 30 people with their horticulture problems. We brought in experts from K-State and experts from here around Shawnee County to help answer people's questions. That attendance is down quite a bit from years past, but we're looking to make some changes for 2026. Formerly, this event was held at Fairlon Plaza Mall on a Monday morning when very few of those stores are open, so we're moving it to a Thursday afternoon, early evening, at the library. So hopefully, hoping that a change in location, change in time we hold the event will help increase participation in that. We're also looking to open it up to several of the other nonprofit gardening groups like TOGS, Daily Society, Rose Club, to allow them to have space to promote their group and just get people excited about horticulture activities here in Shawnee County. And then, we do, Master Gardeners do a monthly presentation at the library, and this has been the best year by far that we've had for attendance. Our presentation in January on lawn alternatives had over 60 members of the community present, so it's great to be increasing our outreach with those activities. Next up, Response Line. So this is where the Master Gardener volunteers help answer a lot of the horticulture questions that come into our Extension Office from the 1st of April through the end of September. Before the season, I worked with a few other Horticulture Agents here in Northeast Kansas to provide hands-on training for our volunteers in plant ID, entomology, and plant pathology. That was some feedback that we've all gotten from our volunteers, is they didn't feel like they had enough training before going in and trying to answer questions from the public, so we offered that to them. And it was also a great opportunity to have those various volunteer groups interacting with each other. All of the Master Gardeners are going for the same goal, but we go about things just a little bit differently, so it was fun to see those connections being made across county borders. It was a pretty good Response Line season. Master Gardeners answered 396 questions. That graph down on the bottom, that blue line, is this year's Response Line. So we were just a little bit down from years past. We had crazy weather. It wasn't super hot like it normally is. We had good rainfall through the year. We still ended up with right about 400 questions, and 34 volunteers took turns answering these questions, which works out to about a third of our active Master Gardeners. We also continued the use of our online question survey, and we still had about 12.5% of our questions that came into the office submitted through that online survey. We also continue to maintain our eight demonstration gardens around Topeka, and we held a ribbon cutting for our two newest gardens, so our native plant garden at Washburn and our demonstration vegetable and community garden at the CRC Care Center at Stout. Thanks again to Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Rippon helping us celebrate that opening with us. So we had commissioners, partners that donated space and time and all of that to help us develop these gardens, project sponsors, volunteers. We had Washburn Administration. We had the CRC CEO present, and we even had some really great coverage from WIVW, so it was great to open up those two gardens on a great note. And then, new Master Gardeners. So the volunteers have done a fantastic job helping us recruit some new volunteers. So we have 17 currently going through their basic training. We're continuing with our watch party method of viewing class, so we put the presentations up on the screen just like we are today, get the group all together to really start building connections with one another. Master Gardeners do a lot of great work in the community, but it's also very much a social opportunity for those volunteers, so it's great to have them start building those connections. And the classes will run through the first week of December, at which point they'll start their in-training years, volunteers. All right, little bit of my stuff. So Horticulture Questions here at the office. We answered 767 Horticulture Questions from the first of last October through the end of this September. We've also simplified the topics for organizing the information that we get. That pie chart that you're seeing is kind of the question breakdown per topic. So like normal, our biggest topic is trees, these huge plants that people really care about because of all the benefits they give. Insects is also a really big topic this year. We did have a little bit of a big push on army worms this year, probably 20, 30, 40 questions, so not quite like we had in 2021 with a huge outbreak of those bugs, but still a good push for them. And then, we're also using this as a needs assessment for programming, so I'm using this to say, hey, we got a lot of tree questions. I'm going to focus my programming efforts on trees and insect-related topics. And that graph down below is the number of questions that we receive per month, and you can definitely tell when people aren't really working out in the garden as much there in November and December and January, where things are definitely cooling down, and then picks up pretty quickly once we get into the start of the growing season. And some programs that I have held over this program here, so my main focus has been working to bring extension to the outlined communities. So much of our work here at the office is focused on Topeka proper, but we also have to keep in mind that we have all of the outlined communities in Shawnee County. So the first of those is pairing down, managing calorie pair in Northeast Kansas. So calorie pair, Bradford pair, Ristor Crap pair, K-State's, or not K-State, KDA is bringing in the moratorium on moving those plants through the state of Kansas starting January 1, 2027. So we wanted to start providing people education on why we want to stop the spread of those plants, how to manage those as they get out into agronomic-type settings, and then what regulatory changes and what they can plant instead of those calorie pairs. So we held that out at the Rossville Senior Center, drew in quite a few people from that community. And the programs that I held over the summer are the Tree Smart Trees for Northeast Kansas. We talked about what trees do well here, how to pick a good one at the nursery, so you're starting, setting yourself up for success from the beginning, proper planting technique, and then best management practices to get it through year one. I held this at four locations around the county, the Shawnee North Community Center, Rossville Community Library, the Public Library here in town, and then the Barrington United Methodist Church, so really trying to hit the different corners here in Shawnee County. And then newsletters. So I've started writing a quarterly newsletter for the, for the library, so this is helping to market the Master Gardener presentations and activities and giving timely gardening advice. So I actually got an email from Ginger Park, who's the one that oversees that, that the Horticulture article in the Topeka-Shawnee County Public Library Newsletter was the most popular one that got clicked on. So that's been some great outreach for us. And the picture that you're seeing there is the monthly newsletter that I've started sending. It was formerly just an email. Here's the different things going on, but I decided to step it up a little bit. So right now, it's just Master Gardener activities and mine, but I'm hoping to expand to start helping the other, again, like the TOGS and Rose Society and all of those, start promoting their events, just to have a one-stop shop for Horticulture Activities here in Shawnee County. And if you'd like to join, just shoot me an email. There's my email right there. So I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
No?
Perfect.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. You guys get me next. Going back to 4-H. My name is Grace Wiens. I'm a Shawnee County 4-H Extension Agent. Since it's National 4-H Week, I thought I'd share. I was a member of the Beeler 4-H Club in Reno County for many years. Like I said, it is National 4-H Week. It is wonderful to be here presenting to you guys during our National Celebration Week. The 4-H New Year was just last week on the 1st of October, and so this is the full week for us to celebrate the accomplishments of our program, gain some visibility, and share about the great things that we can do for the youth in our communities. So some things that go on with us annually, I thought I'd share some of our highlights. Our program here in Shawnee County is growing. Last year, we had 247 youth enrolled in Shawnee County 4-H. That was actually up 12% from 220 youth in the 2023-2024 program year. Very exciting to see that. We've recently revitalized our 4-H Ambassador Program. It's a core group of youth that helps us share information about 4-H, spreads some promotional information, and I really think our growth is largely credited to them. They've done a fantastic job. Austin, that was our King that was with us, has been involved with that as well, and it's been super fun to watch those youth grow and learn a little bit about themselves and the way that they can help present 4-H to the public. Exciting news, we have a new club starting in southwest Topeka called Topeka Trail Blazers. They'll be meeting at the Water District Building down by J. Scheidler Elementary. First Monday of the month at 6:30, I believe, is their meeting time, so anyone down in that area. We have a club in Auburn, but if you're not wanting to drive quiet all the way out to Auburn, Topeka Trail Blazers might be the club for you. That brings us to a total of nine community-based clubs. Those community-based clubs are largely geographical. They contain youth in all of our projects, and their focus is on community involvement, teaching the youth a variety of different project areas, and building that community between other youth. And then, we have three project-based clubs that allow those youth in those clubs to focus really heavily on one specific project. Dogs, bunnies, and horses are our project-based clubs. Those kids, when they have their meetings, they have a fantastic opportunity to actually bring their animals and learn about training and animal care with other 4-Hers that share similar interests. Aside from our project clubs, we are fortunate to offer 46 projects for 4-Hers of all different interests. I think we have animal science, consumer arts, fiber arts, science STEM projects, and then natural resources, so Horticulture, Entomology, Forestry. We also offer a self-determined project for independent study, so any 4-Her that may have an interest in something that's not already in the umbrella of one of our 46 existing projects can take that as an option. One of our biggest times of year to do programming is summer. So there's two summer programs I really want to bring to you guys' attention as huge successes for us. We have had a summer intern for the last three years. The first year we had the intern, it was funded through a grant that Kansas 4-H had secured via the Kansas Department of Education, but it was only a three-year grant, and so when that funding ran out, we were actually fortunate enough to get some funding from you, from our commissioners, to host an 11-week internship. And the point of that internship was to deliver educational programming and to help us out during the fair. Our intern did a fantastic job this year. She had 51 programs at five different sites. Boys and Girls Club and Rossville Library have always been fantastic partners for us in hosting sites, and she had 1,207 contacts between kindergarten and 6th grade in the six weeks she did programming. The kids loved it. I was actually just looking through the survey results from her programs yesterday and caught that between 90 and 95% of students in her programs reported that they had learned something new in each session, which is fantastic. She did an incredible job teaching. The other summer program that is really a huge success for Shawnee County 4-H is Topeka Way to Work. The City of Topeka and Fellowship High Crest are our main partners there. In case you guys have not heard about it, we partner with local businesses in Shawnee County and actually place student interns in those businesses so they can get real job experience, and then every other Friday through their summer internship, I go and teach professional development with them. So they have real job experience, and they have an educational, professional development component. We learn about things like communication, time management, professionalism, navigating conflict, and then a little bit of information about understanding their own personality and leadership styles, and some information about financial management, financial literacy, and looking forward to their future, how to determine how to get into a future career. It's been a great success. The program continues to grow. We had 30 participants this year, which was our biggest year yet, and the students always report a fantastic jump in their knowledge of different career readiness skills. And then, the last big thing we do during county, during summer is the county fair. Like I said, our program had grown a lot this year, and one of the places that is really reflected is in our county fair. Of our 4-Hers that were enrolled, 178 of them participated via exhibiting. There were also a few more that they do come to the fair to participate, even though they don't exhibit anything, but I don't have a count on those. We had 1,699 entries submitted to the fair, which, a fun fact, that it's 300 more than we had in the 2024 fair. So super exciting to see our fair continue to grow. I always think it's one of the best times of the 4-H year because everyone is always there. You know, I do a lot of work with our program, but actually getting to have the 4-Hers all in one place and see their accomplishments and see the growth that happens from year to year is far and away the best time of every year. And then, our last big community program that I want to highlight is our school enrichment program. This is a huge success for us every year. It is a massive part of 4-H educational outreach. We, like it says on the, on the screen, we had 1,574 students reached just from our school enrichment programs. 29 schools participated in the 2024-2025 school year. We are just getting started on school enrichment this year. Our first program goes out next week. We only have 10 schools signed up so far, but the deadline for the next one is not until January, so we are on track with where we usually are. And in those schools, usually we have three, two to three classrooms per school. Last year, we were able to secure some funding from the Shawnee County Extension Education Foundation and scholarship first-year classrooms, and we had 24 new classrooms join our program last year. And as of today, we are already up to 13 new classrooms signed up, so very exciting. We have some chick hatching, as you can see in the picture. This is one of our most popular programs. They get a dozen eggs in an incubator and get to learn about the process of chicken embryology, and how they grow in the egg, and how they hatch, and then the life cycle of a chicken from there. We also have butterfly hatching. So similarly with chickens, they get a kit with three caterpillars and a net to hatch them in. They get to watch the process of the caterpillar growing, forming a cocoon, and then becoming a butterfly. They get to release the butterflies when they're done. We have an ant science program, so they get an anthill, get to learn about how ants live, how they tunnel. And then, we have a wheat science kit. It's very popular around Kansas Day. We send it around in January. They learn about the weed industry in Kansas, and then they get to bake bread. So I think that's everything I've got for you guys today. Any questions?
Great programs, Grace.
No. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your support.
All right. I appreciate the presentations. We will go ahead and move on. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be super quick. Candace Stiles, I was 4-H member in Hodgman County Pawnee Pioneers. That was a long time ago, but since it's National 4-H Week, I had to mention my club in Hanston, Kansas. Okay, but we're in Shawnee County. So we were not here last quarter, so these numbers reflect quarters 2 and 3, April to September. In that second quarter, we had 3,040 direct educational contacts. Third quarter, 2,175 educational contacts. These are the people we're doing programs with, we're surveying, we're counting. It does not include our walk-in traffic, our phone calls, or the offshoots. But the one thing I love about these charts is we are a diverse county, and Shawnee County Extension reaches a diverse audience, so I always like to put that up there. One of the programs you didn't hear from today was our FNEP Expanded Food and Nutrition Program led by Sofia Diaz Bueso, and I always highlight their outcomes because they're fabulous, but I just saw so many partners that they were working with over these two quarters. I wanted to bring that to light. They're at the library, Mirror Inc., Topeka Rescue Mission, East Topeka Senior Center, Scent, Topeka Public Schools, Boys and Girls Club, Shawnee Parks and Rec. And with those programs, they're still getting amazing outcomes. 73% of their participants improved in eating more vegetables. 60% were drinking less soda. 53% making a shopping list more often. 53% made changes to be active more often. Like, I can put their outcomes up every time because they're amazing, but I wanted to highlight their partnerships as well. Community Vitality is my area, but in that second quarter, we had our biggest office effort from Farm to You, so I wanted to highlight that. This is our second-grade program that teaches youth about agriculture, where their food comes from. And this year, we had 543 students, and 30 volunteers helped us with that effort. That number is down from the year before, so our agents have asked other counties what they are doing. We have surveyed the teachers, the ones that did not come last year that have come in years prior. So we are making changes. In 2026, we're not going to start in Landen Arena with the video. One of the struggles is getting kids in the seats, and then out of the seats, and then over to the barn. And we're going to bring more learning stations to the barn, more interactivity, to hopefully get more numbers back up in that program, because it's a good one. Our Family and Consumer Science Agent, Adely Tompkins, she started in February, and so in a lot of this reporting period, she was training and learning her programs, but has now made that transition to doing programs, which is so much more fun. She has had two programs on brain health and Alzheimer's, one at the Rossville Community Library and another at the East Topeka Senior Center, had great survey results and great conversations on that topic, and has more programs in that brain health area that she's planning to do. And then, right now, she is quickly preparing for Medicare Open Enrollment that starts October 15th. So we have always been a Schick counseling site for open enrollment for Medicare, and Adely is taking that on, and I believe her appointments are almost up to December, so got to schedule those appointments quick. And then, lastly, I just wanted to talk about the meeting room space that we have and that we utilize at the Extension Office. I would bet that the most-used meeting room in Manor Conference Center is the Shawnee County Extension Meeting Room. Between October 2024 and September 2025, we had 222 meetings up there, and that does not include, like, our, just our strictly staff meetings. We work with 4-H, Master Gardeners, Fair Board, partners like Boy Scouts, Kansas International 4-H Exchange, farm management appointments, et cetera. So I know we talk a lot in the county about Manor Conference Center, but I just want to say we love our room. We utilize it a lot, and if we ever need to be in any of those conversations, we're happy to have them. And then, our downstairs meeting room in that same period had 188 meetings because those Master Gardeners just love to meet. They, they love a committee meeting. No, we love them. So we are getting good use out of the two meeting rooms in our office. So thank you guys for your support, and any questions?
Questions for Candace? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right. Now we'll move on to the Parks and Recreation Department-wide Master Plan update.
Tim Loet, Director, Parks and Recreation Department. Well, first, just congratulations to the 4-H crew. I mean, that's a tough one to follow. I like that we, that towards the end of it, there was a little bit of partnership between you guys and us, but I think there's room to do more. We've got a lot of trees and gardens and spaces, and, no, that's all right, that's all right. But we should definitely try to do more in the future. We'd love to be part of it, so. Okay, well, I think, I think, I think I'm going to just start by going ahead and turning this over to Brian Stern. Brian is with Landwork Studios. Brian and I worked together on the Family Park Master Plan, which I think turned out really, really well, and you guys are seeing all the progress there, and I think that's been a great success. So I'll let Brian go through his presentation and then absolutely be available to answer any questions that you guys might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Commissioners, for time to be able to speak with you, have a conversation about Parks and Recreation here in Shawnee County today. We're, we're extremely excited at the prospect of working with you all, with him and his staff, and with the thousands of your constituents who, who, you know, play, live, and enjoy your parks and your facilities. I've got a presentation that'll allow me to speak just a little bit about our team and the process that we would bring to this project, and, but, you know, I want to leave some time. I want to make sure that any questions you all have about this, this master plan process are answered here before I leave today. So I'm going to try to go through this as sort of expeditiously as I can. I am, or would be, the project manager for this master plan process, but I bring a sort of a diverse and very localized team to this master plan. Landwork Studios is a landscape architecture and planning firm. We're based out of Alatha, but on a project as, you know, far-reaching as this, we utilize a sort of a diverse team of professionals, include architects that are based just a block away here, HTK, civil engineers at CFS, another great Topeka firm, Ballard King. Darren Barr is a recreation planner based out of Columbia, Missouri. and ETC Institute is sort of our survey partner. They're based out of Alatha, and they're experts when it comes to park and recreation survey products. Worked with all of these groups on a number of master plans over the last few years. You know, Landworks is, is based out of Alatha. I probably said before, personally, I live in Lawrence. We do a variety of landscape architectural design and planning work on both sides of really the state line. When it comes to master plans like this, I think this will actually be our, our firm's twentieth system-wide master plan. We've got a list of, of some of the more recent ones that we've completed, and, and all really in Kansas and Missouri. All of these communities are different, as you can imagine. A range of sizes, a range of park system sizes in that list, whether we're talking about Linsboard, or whether we're talking about KC Mo. The, the plan we just most recently completed is for the town of Sedgwick, which is, which is down in Harvey and Sedgwick Counties, has about four park properties and just about 1,500 people. We've obviously done projects a lot bigger than that. I guess my point being is all of these end up being extremely different processes. And that's determined by the staff and what they're looking for, and it's determined by the makeup of the park system and the users that, that use these spaces. Some of our most recent experiences that I'd be happy to highlight, obviously, the tremendous opportunity to work with you all in the master planning and ultimately the, the construction of the first phase of Family Park West Side of Town. Some of our more recent master planning efforts include City of Lenexa, Kansas City, Missouri, one that we wrapped up about a year and a half ago. Actually ended up winning the State of Missouri's Outstanding Plan Award for, for that year on that effort. As well as Liberty, a, a town, you know, sort of in the middle of, of some of these sizes that I've talked about. It's got about thirty parks, about 30,000 folks, great community on the north side of Kansas City. You know, when we talk about some of the sizes of these systems, size, size matters. You know, when you, when you're looking at a park system, you think about the size of the staff. You think about the size of the park and the physical inventory in terms of parks, trails, indoor opportunities, community centers, aquatic centers. Shawnee County is a tremendous system. You know, when you, when you, when you think about the park systems in Kansas, it's one of your finest. You know, and, and we have a big task ahead of us in terms of, you know, doing all the work to inventory, analyze, and help come up with recommendations for a system that has, you know, seven community centers, three golf courses, you know, nine aquatic facilities, over a hundred, almost 110 parks, and sixty miles of, of trail. And not to mention programs that, you know, serve tens of thousands of folks. They are a top-notch department. I'm sure you're aware, you know, they are CAPRA accredited. That's the Council on Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies. There are only five agencies in our state that, that carry CAPRA accreditation. And park and rec departments are often victims of their own success. The more they get done and the diversity of things that they take on, the more they're typically asked to do with less. And so what I, what I, what I want to stress when it comes to doing these master plans, we only do these about once every ten years. In the case of this department, they, they're going on about eleven years now since their last one. You, you, you don't want to overburden a department that's doing this much for its people by also asking them to essentially do their own master plan. They, they are, they are talented folks, they wear a lot of different hats, and they will be instrumental in the production of this master plan, both in review of it and collaborating with our team to streamline the process. But we want to make sure that Tim, Jessica, and their amazing staff can continue to serve your constituents and fulfill their mission. Master Plan's a great opportunity to do four or five different things. You know, we get to, at this point in time, review the context of the park ecosystem around us. What's going on in this community? Not just in terms of what this park agency is doing, but what are schools doing? What are the planning actions the City of Topeka and Shawnee County are making to improve the infrastructure around town? We also get to specifically review and analyze and sort of assess the park facilities, you know, in terms of all of those parks, those indoor facilities, the programs. See where it's at, see how well it's functioning. And it's a time to give a platform for the park users, those park constituents, your community, that plays, you know, activates themselves, keeps themselves healthy in these parks. What are they looking for? What are their priorities right now? And ultimately, at the end of this, we expect to be able to produce a roadmap, something that this department can rely on for the next ten years as they are planning out adjustments to policies, changes to programming, and capital improvements, so that you all understand, you can see what's coming ahead of you. They can see what's coming ahead of you each year as they plan out, you know, capital expenditures for improvements to the system. Our approach on this project is something that I'm happy to go through here relatively quickly. I know that you all have had a chance to see in recent meetings, you know, a snapshot of our team's schedule, our, our fees, and the approach that we plan to take to this project. It's sort of a five-phase deal, and they generally happen linearly. There is some overlap between these. When we talk about the initiation phase, this is going to be what we sort of take on during the first six to eight weeks of this master planning process, where we are essentially laying the infrastructure and the groundwork for the planning process, having kickoff meetings with the staff and our steering committee, making sure we have time to get in front of boards, such as the Board of County Commissioners, such as the Park and Rec Advisory Board, to fully understand what expectations are, review existing planning, the planning ecosystem, what, what, what plans have been recently completed by this department, what plans are out there in the community in terms of trails, bike infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure. We do a lot of stuff behind the scenes at this point as well, in terms of setting up some of our digital engagement, starting to construct the survey that's going to go out. It's a time to really lay the groundwork for the months ahead. That includes also developing sort of a graphic language for this document. We're really passionate with Landworks about creating plans that people want to actually pick up and read. You know, if something has graphic appeal, speaks to the unique identity of a community, people are more apt to pick it up and look at it. And if people are more apt to pick it up, they're going to know what's inside of it. They're going to support the actions that this department wishes to take and that you all ultimately take. And that's what we're all about, having this unique community understand its parks and, and want to help it propel forward. The discovery phase generally comes next. It's, it takes the most time when it comes to, to the planning effort, because there's a whole lot we have to do during this phase to make sure we're making accurate implementation and recommendations at the end. Discovery includes beginning community engagement, which we do on several different fronts. There is a needs assessment survey, a statistically valid survey instrument that's going to go out to thousands of mailboxes across Shawnee County, ultimately produce hundreds of results that our partner ETC is able to analyze, and it gives us a statistically valid snapshot of where people's priorities are in this county. But that's just one of the tools in our engagement toolbox. We're going to be setting up an opportunity for folks to engage with the plan virtually, a unique website devoted to this process that folks can, you know, click onto from the comfort of their home, allow folks to take a look at a map of the system, and provide unique comments for parks and trails and community centers around the community, as well as answer short, small surveys that allow us to understand where people are at. During this phase, we'll also be doing a fair bit of in-person engagement with the community. That includes a handful of open house opportunities for folks to come to a location, you know, typically a parks facility, and, and, you know, engage in, in activities that we have set up so we can get their input on what is important to them, as well as how they feel about the recommendations we are starting to come up with as the process comes towards its, its latter half. We're going to be setting up nearly a dozen interviews with different stakeholder groups, folks who have a vested interest in the park system and how it is operating, whether that's, you know, Topeka Public Schools, local healthcare practitioners, avid mountain bikers, pickleballers. Folks who we want to be able to make sure we get in a room together and, and, you know, understand their unique interests. And really, one of the biggest aspects of this phase, too, this is to literally visit and, and do inventory and assessment for all the park facilities. Talking outdoor spaces, indoor spaces, understanding the program menu from top to bottom. And that also includes actually park finances. That's, that's not mentioned on here as a bullet point, but understanding where this park system has been for the last five-plus years in terms of budgeting, revenue and expenses, cost recovery. That work is pretty exhaustive. It'll involve, for sure, partnership with staff. This slide shows a graphic of typically what the outcome of, say, a park visit is. If we go to any of these parks, we're talking whether it's Skyline Park, Gage Park, Central Park, we're going to come away with an understanding of what's going on in that park, what exists there, and literally give it a numeric score based upon a rubric that we come up with, with, with Tim, Jessica, and their staff. We will be visiting all of those indoor facilities and, and going through an exercise similar there to understand visually, you know, the integrity of these spaces from a structural standpoint, sort of mechanical and, and building system standpoint, and how they're operating, how they're operating for staff, as well as how they're functioning for users. The third phase is our analysis phase. At this point, we have a pile of data, whether it is input from local residents, where we're starting to analyze strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the system, whether it's recreational and leisure trends that we are able to pull using consumer credit and, and shopping data, demographic data. We're able to understand how folks in Shawnee County are interacting with their parks, and through demography, through purchases they are making. We, we, we can begin to understand where their recreation, leisure interests lie. I'll be doing a benchmarking analysis to look at how Shawnee County stacks up with other peer institutions. And, right, we'll, we'll, we'll also be, I want to make sure I say this, at the end of each of these phases, getting back together with a steering committee to report on, on what we found. This is a screenshot of, of, of our virtual engagement platform, actually. This is, this is an example of, of the park system up in Liberty, Missouri. It's a platform called Social Pinpoint. Folks have the ability to, to leave comments and, and, and essentially do a crowdsourced SWAT analysis of a park system, where we start to get, you know, real-time input from folks on what they find are strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, or threats to the system. It's kind of like Yelp for parks and rec. It's, 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 it's really engaging. It's something that we, we literally have, you know, thousands of, of, you know, hits of participation on. It's a way to reach folks in a way that you never can exactly in person. These are examples of, of sort of priority investment, bar charts that we're able to come up with in this phase of the planning process, where we start to be able to tell where folks' greatest priorities lie when it comes to investing in new infrastructure for a park system, or new programming, enrichment, sports, athletic activities for a system. The vision phase of this plan is where we start to really put all of that information together and start to come up with a true strategic plan for the system. It's where we start to draft really the, the final sort of back half of the report after we've done all of this work to engage citizens, go through discovery and, and dig through the data, crawl through the, the facilities, walk through all the parks. We get to a point where the analysis starts to lead us in the direction of strategic recommendations and, and actions. It's during this phase, we will also take a, put really a magnifying glass to Gage Park and some of the unique elements and questions that, that we have for that piece of property with all the partners that we have there in the Gage Park, in, you know, improvement authority. It's a, it's, it's a part of the, the process where we really start to see some of the biggest strides and, and movement. And at the close of that, we really kind of deliver to the steering committee a draft report. You know, this is an example from the City of Lenexa, where we start to see, you know, an overall plan of the system, and then we then start to begin to highlight the, the improvements and the recommendations made for, for each of those properties, each of those program areas. The implementation phase is the final phase in the process. Generally takes about two months, and most of that time is consumed by working with staff to review, refine that ultimate report, and then bring it forward to a series of, you know, advisory boards to get, you know, tacit approval and recommendations, so that we can also ultimately come forward to, to you all for final approval of that plan and, you know, then produce the, the final hard copy documentation, online files, digital files that staff need to make this available to the community for, you know, for the immediate future and the long-term future. Like I said, the goal of the process is to provide a roadmap for the system so that the community is able to make proactive decisions on facilities and parks across the county and not be, not be forced to sort of rely on reactive decisions year in, year out as, as new things come up. The schedule that we've proposed in, in our, in our proposal, and we're continuing to update as we just sort of look at the calendar, is one that's, you know, in, in the ballpark of nine to twelve, excuse me, nine to 10 months. We'd love to be able to have this document complete before the next budget cycle. That's generally something that, that, you know, triggers when we want to be finished with a plan like this. We'll see how that goes. So we, we've, we've been, we've been grateful to have discussion with Tim and his staff since our interview in the summer, and we understand this is a big plan, one that requires consideration. So I'm, I'm happy to, to take questions from you all about the process. Anything that I've left out there unanswered?
I have a question. As part of this master plan, would you be doing like a needs assessment of, of where future parks might be located? And I, I know we went through a phase in this city for years where we didn't, we didn't identify areas for new parks. Fortunately, we had the Family Park area, which was like 60, 80 acres, as you're familiar with. But, but we can't fall short there. I, I think we still need to identify places where we have a lot of growth, where we, where's the next, where's the next park? Somebody saved that piece of parcel probably in the 50s. But, you know, it's one of those situations when you're late, you're too late. You have to figure out where those areas are going to be and try to identify and even acquire those areas before it's all developed.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Rapon. We, we typically do a, sort of a level of service analysis to see how the park system is, is, is functioning geographically. You know, we take a look at a map of the system, you know, apply sort of the radii of service that any of these properties generally serve. Usually think of neighborhood parks as serving the area of, you know, walking distance, you know, a 10-minute walk, something like, you know, half a mile to a mile. Park like Family Park is more of a regional destination, maybe serves a radius of, you know, five to 10 miles. But we can take a look geographically at, at level of service and see what areas of the county are, are not being served. And we also, you know, take a look at planning data often. Take a look at where the county is developing, where building permits have been pulled over the last two to three years, so we can see the direction in which, you know, growth is happening and understand where, you know, especially if there's a gap in, in certain parts of the county, where we need to focus, you know, potential park infrastructure investments. And that implies, that applies honestly for, for new, yet-to-be-built parks, as well as parks that are in great need for whatever reason. Maybe they haven't had, you know, investment in the last 10 to 20 years. But that, those are, those are a couple of ways in which we, we start to take a look geographically at, at where, where the needs lie. Okay, thank you.
I guess just briefly, I know that there's a criticism that a lot of companies will just cut and pace prior plans. Is this going to be unique to Shawnee County? Is this going to be unique to Shawnee County, and, I mean, is that a commitment from Land Works?
It's absolutely a commitment from Land Works, Commissioner Cook. I, I've, I've had a chance, you know, here and there, sometimes Land Works will be brought on as a sub-consultant on efforts like this. That was the case once in Blue Springs, that was a case recently in, in Olathe. We've worked with different consultants, there are consultants out there that do take a cookie-cutter approach. Our, our business isn't about that, we're, we're really devoted to understanding the unique identity of each of these park systems we work in, and having a document that embraces that and speaks to that. And we feel like our engagement methodology, our, our sort of graphic design capabilities really give us no choice but to, to do something new and out of the box each time we, we step into one of these projects. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all, commissioners.
Not for me either.
Any questions for Tim?
No, I, I think those answered quite a bit of the questions that we had, that I had.
Great. I appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to bring Brian in and, and, and listening to what we're, we're trying to put together, so, thank you.
Okay. I appreciate you taking the time to come speak with us. The next item is public comment.
Talk about being at the right place at the right time. I've got two, my name's Henry McClure, I live in Topeka, Kansas. I've got two ballfields that I'm redeveloping the land, I wanted to offer them to Shawnee County first. So, I've got the backstops, I got the fence, I need to move them, I gotta get them off the land, I'd do it now. You know that Valley Park, NIA is 65 to 75% in the flood plain? And developers and renters and landlords, it's like, it's a tough place to develop, and it's like, you could probably do like some sort of neighborhood research and look into, how do we redevelop that, maybe create some park space? Because with the rising cost of flood insurance, it just doesn't make it, make sense to invest in that area, or redevelop your, you know, fix up the house. And also, I wanna thank the illustrious Rich Eckert for his work on Lawrence Bay, 'cause he really guided the city on how they could have collected those taxes, and it was a shame over a decade that they didn't do it, but wanna thank him for his good work on schooling the city of Topeka of what to do right. So, thank you.
Do you have a call stand? I'm like to point out, I'm merely a turn, following the direction of.
Are there any, any other public comment today? How about any administrative communications?
Good morning, Commissioners. Angela Lewis, Director of Administrative Services. Today, the Mobile Mamography Bus is over at Evergy Plaza, they'll be there from 8:00 to 5:00. If you don't have an appointment, it's okay, go over anyway, they'll be there all day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative communications? Mr. Rippon?
I didn't yell loud enough at the Chiefs game, but it was, it was a fun trip going Jacksonville there, and good time. Next week. Get them next week.
Good to have you back, Commissioner.
All right. Henceforth, we'll be referring to our county councils, the illustrious Rich Eckert.
If you think that's not going into my self-evaluation, you're kidding me.
Do we, I don't think we have a need for executive session today, so we are adjourned.